One moment.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. The purpose of this meeting is to observe the budget work session. Please see the Zoom meeting information that has been provided, that will be provided. The first subject is we will call this meeting to order at five, five thirty-five P M. First item will be the F Y two thousand twenty-three operating budget work session. I think that's it. So are we going to put that up on the screen?
I would like to have Dr. Golson introduce the items that we will be discussing tonight, the budget portions that we will be discussing tonight.
Hello.
Thank you for our first of three budget work sessions this evening. We will have the Division of Academics, the Division of Accountability.
But did we read the Spanish interpretation and all that? Did I miss all of it?
Thank you. First of all, I need to call the role to establish a quorum. I was having difficulty pulling my screen up. Ms. Ellis, would you call the role? Or Ms. Barton, would you call, do the role call?
Ms. Ellis is going to do the role call.
Okay, whoever, please give role call.
Um, Dr. Miller, we need to play the recording first.
Okay. Do you have the recording for the public?
Yes, one moment, please. I need to be home.
Madam Chair, while we wait, and I just want to say we do apologize to the public.
Interpreting Services, Servicios de Interpretación. Simultaneous interpretation is available in Spanish. La Interpretación Simultánea está disponible en español. On a computer at the bottom of the screen will be an interpretation globe. Click that globe and then select Spanish. En una computadora, en la parte baja de la pantalla habrá un globo de interpretación. Haga clic en ese globo y seleccione Spanish. On a mobile device at the bottom of the screen, tap the ellipses icon on the bottom right. Three dots. Tap Language Interpretation. Tap Spanish. En un dispositivo móvil, en la parte baja de la pantalla, toca el icono de elipses en la parte baja de la derecha. Dos tres puntos. Toque Language Interpretation. Toque Spanish. Thank you. Gracias.
Gracias, thank you. Now we will move into, Dr. Golson, would you please introduce? Oh, are we being recorded?
Uh, yes, may we call the role now?
Yes, role call. Mrs. Adam Stafford?
Here.
Mrs. Ahmed?
Here.
Ms. Boozer Struther?
Here.
Mr. Saran Ruiz?
Here.
Mr. Harris?
Here.
Mrs. Mickens Murray? Mrs. Mickens Murray?
Here. You can't hear me?
Yes, Mr. Montero?
Here.
Mr. Murray?
Here.
Mrs. Queen?
Present.
Mr. Thomas?
Here.
Mr. Valentine?
Here.
Mrs. Williams?
Present.
Dr. Miller?
Present.
Ms. Williams, would you take over for a minute, please?
Sure. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the January twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-two F Y twenty-three proposed budget work session. Before I begin, I would like to ask everyone to turn off their wireless communications so that you do not interrupt the meeting. We are all using Zoom and we heard the Spanish interpretation services that we are providing to our Spanish-speaking public. The Board of Education has convened this evening for the sole purpose to discuss the proposed F Y two thousand twenty-three budget. This work session is the first of three budget work sessions and public hearing for the board is conducted to develop its budget submission for consideration by the county executive. The purpose of this budget work session is to fine-tune the budget proposal sent to us by the C E O, Dr. Golson, so that it meets all of our highest priorities and represents the best spending plan that will serve all of our students and staff across the county. Our work sessions are recorded and will be available on the board website. Can I get a motion to accept and approve the agenda for this work session today, the January twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty, for January twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-two, for the F Y twenty-three budget work session? Can I get a motion?
Madam Vice Chair, I make a motion to approve the work session for today, January twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-two.
Second.
Are there any discussions? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposition? The ayes have it. Before we begin the, uh, the work session, we added to the agenda today, today, an emergency item to discuss the school calendar. Dr. Golson, would you present the school calendar agenda item?
Thank you. Good evening. We are proposing a calendar change for two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two that allows us to, um, to observe the nationally-recognized Juneteenth, which falls on, which will be now on June twentieth. In order to ensure that we do not extend the school year, we're asking to replace that day with March seventh, which was a professional development day and now making that a day for all students. In addition, we have added two inclement weather days when we had to close school um, right after the winter break, which then allows us to conclude this school year on June twenty-third. Any additional makeup, um, any additional inclement weather days that we may experience where students are not able to participate in a full day of instruction or to be in school will be utilized by employing virtual instruction. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Golson. Can I get a motion to accept the revisions to the calendar?
I have a question, madam.
We will take questions after we get a motion and then a second.
So moved?
Second.
Thank you. It has been moved and properly seconded. Discussion, uh, Ms. Board Member Queen.
Thank you so very much, Dr. Golson. My question is, um, because Juneteenth is at the end of the year, um, and what a great holiday it is, but why couldn't we as a school system take that day and have a fun educational day for our students um, throughout the day instead of just, um, closing that day? I've seen other holidays that we've actually had school. I think we can take that opportunity and educate our kids and make it a fun-filled day on Juneteenth. So I was just wondering why we didn't, why we did not think outside the box on that day. We just decided to just take that day to set aside.
We are actually following the federal government that will be observing it on that Monday and our local government. So we will be the only entity, public entity that will be open on the twentieth.
Okay, so that's why. Okay, thank you so very much.
Thank you, Board Member Queen. Seeing no other questions. Ms. Alice, would you please take the role?
Yes, Mrs. Adam Stafford?
Yes.
Mrs. Ahmed?
Yes.
Ms. Boozer Struther?
Yes.
Mr. Saran Ruiz?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mrs. Mickens Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Montero?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mrs. Queen?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Valentine?
Aye.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Dr. Miller? Dr. Miller?
She stepped away.
Ready. So you left, uh?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Can we get a tally of the votes?
We, I'm sorry, we have thirteen, yes.
The motion passes. Moving on to agenda item three point oh, budget presentation. We will now move to that portion of the agenda for the budget presentation. Dr. Golson, Dr. Golson, do you have any general opening remarks that you would like to provide before we begin the discussion of the various sections of the proposed budget?
Yes, thank you. Tonight, we are presenting, um, for the very first budget work session, questions to our Division of Academics, Division of Accountability, and the Business Management Services Division. Each, thank you for the eighty-seven questions that were already presented by board members um, in preparation for today's work session. Each division will have approximately twenty minutes for questions to ensure that we're able to conclude by seven P M in order to begin the public hearing portion of the evening. We will now begin with any questions for academics. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Golson. Before we proceed, I'd like to remind my colleagues that during the first round of questions and responses, you will have five minutes. Then we will have, uh, three minutes for the second round and staff will capture the questions that are not answered tonight and those answers will be provided to all board members as a follow-up item. So the first section is academics. Uh, board members, do you have any questions around the Division of Academics? Board Member Adam Stafford?
Okay, and I just wanted, just for clarification, I know that the administration has answered them to us in a document. Should I go through each of them? I'm just trying to make sure.
No, all of those questions and responses have been posted for the public to review as well as all of our board members. This is an opportunity to ask any clarifying questions that you may have from our responses or any new questions that you did not have.
Do you have any questions, uh, Board Member Adam Stafford?
Sorry, if you could just come back to me, sorry.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from board members? Any comments on academics? I don't see any other hands, but I just wanted to, um, have a statement, uh, have a comment about academics. Um, as I was reviewing the, the academics, um, goals and objectives, um, I just wanted to note that there has been a great evolution around the, the goals that the Division of Academics has placed forward and just seeing over the years in most, uh, if the public is not aware, we just started putting goals and objectives in our budget probably five years ago, three to five years ago, and just seeing the evolution of it and seeing how some of the comments and questions that we've had over the years are now incorporated in the goals and objective of the Division of Academics. It makes me feel as a board member that we're heard and listened to and our questions and comments are incorporated in the goals and objectives. And I just wanted to commend Dr. Judy White on, um, on doing that. I really appreciate that. And the reason that I'm saying it now, because that was the first one that I reviewed. But I also see that in the evolution of a lot of our divisions. So I want to commend Dr. Golson on her leadership of listening to the board members' comments and questions and concerns and incorporating them into the goals and objectives of, of, uh, each of the divisions. Um, I recognize that we may not see change immediately, but to see that it becomes a part of your, the direction that each of their departments are going and moving forward. I know that at, at that time, when the data and the information returns, we will begin to see, um, great increase in our academic success of our students and how we deliver service to the students. So I just wanted to say thank you for doing that and also thank you for your responses to our questions. And I know that we, we went deep in, into the, um, budget book. Um, I may take a second round and sort of pull up some of those questions just so that it can be put on the record. So I'm going to end my first round here and I'm going to put myself in the queue for second round. Thank you.
Board Member, uh, Ahmed?
Uh, thank you. I wanted, uh, for members of the public, the board, our board has passed two different, um, graduation requirement courses over the past couple of years. One is financial literacy and the other is cultural and ethnic studies. And so, uh, the question I have for administration is where are we in terms of progress of implementing, uh, those graduation requirements? I know they were kind of phased, will be phased in over time. Um, is there an update there? And if, i- is that at all, um, reflected in the budget for this year?
I thank you for that question. Good evening, everyone. Uh, financial literacy has been implemented. Um, we actually have students this year in that financial literacy course and we have not, uh, begun the planning of the other course that you've just put forth that came forth this year. And in, when looking outwards of that course, um, I'm sure we'll have more follow-up with you regarding that one.
Wonderful. Thank you, Dr. White.
You're welcome.
Board Member Adam Stafford?
Thank you. I was wondering if you could just provide a bit more detail in the way in which we are going to be funding the English language learner priorities, uh, that were outlined by the work group. Um, I do appreciate the response that you gave in, uh, the, the, um, the report that was sent to us. But maybe if you could just, for the public, share a bit more, um, I know you talked about, um, worker stipends and professional development, um, but perhaps you could just share like what those allocations will sort of pan out to be.
Sure. What I will share is you had a very extensive report that came out of that E L work group. There would be no way that I would get through my twenty minutes this evening to express and explain all the different ways that we will handle that. What I will say about the E L work group is that our team took those recommendations. They aligned them to what we're currently doing with our E L. We look for gaps. Uh, we identify where we need to, um, bridge opportunities to make sure that we cover those things. And we then went across our budgets to make sure that in fact, in order for us to accomplish all of them, that we would be able to do so. We also created a metrics, uh, by which we would be able to, um, continually look monthly and quarterly as to where we are with, um, the timeline, because the timeline is spread out over different years. So we had to look at what to do in two thousand twenty-three versus two thousand twenty-four versus two thousand twenty-five and to make sure that we have everything that we need in place to do so. Um, in this form right now, to sit and kind of lay out line by line will be impossible to do, but we can definitely have further conversation about it. Um, and we can even bring it to academic achievement and talk further there as well.
Yeah, I think that would be helpful, maybe even for us to see some sort of crosswalk that explains sort of maybe just for next year, which of the priorities that you're focusing on from the E L work group and what is the dollar amount attached to that? That's, that would be helpful, I know, for me to kind of see how it lives in the budget. Um, my other question was around early reading and I just wanted to, um, just get some clarification on the supports that we'd be providing there. Is that going to come in the form of professional, like increased professional development for our early literacy educators and that look like stipends or, or contracted services? I know I saw that in there, but maybe if you could just elaborate on that a bit more for me.
Sure, you actually just answered the question. So it's going to be a mixture of all. So in everything we do, we need to make sure our first priority next year is to continue to offer quality, sound, um, professional development for our teachers, especially when we have new items that are introduced this year in the middle of a pandemic. Some of us were, some of our students were still home or some were in the buildings. Uh, we switched in the middle of a textbook adoption, bringing in, uh, characteristics from our science of reading. And based on that, as that has evolved, many new, um, resources have become available. So we've made sure that we've aligned some of our funds for that, which means that when those resources come in, anytime we have anything new, we have to first and foremost provide professional development for our staff and then to make sure that we have the supports in place in our classrooms for our students. In terms of contractual services, whenever we purchase, um, items such as that, if, if and when possible, we work with our vendors to come in to make sure that we have enough support around what's being implemented. Therefore, that's your, a lot of your contractual services as well. Um, in the evenings, because we are really focused on our teachers being in our classrooms, that means the professional development happens after school. So therefore, you could have number one, second job assignments where we're paying our staff to assist in the amount of professional development we have and we pay our teachers after school so that you'll see an increase in workshop head. So all the areas that you hit are all, um, actually impacted whenever we bring on new areas. But we're excited about where we're going with our early literacy program. We're excited about the changes. Those changes will bring about financial, um, supports in many different ways within our budgets and we're just excited where that's going to take us next year.
I wanted, I just wanted to add a follow-up to that. Um, I know that many teachers struggle with after-school professional development. Is it possible for some of that funding to be used for summer-based professional development um, as opposed to after-school or during some of the full-day P Ds that are already planned?
Yeah, we have a robust professional development opportunity that extends the entire school year. What we do know is that whether it be during the school year or it be in the summer, it's voluntary, but we make sure that we provide opportunities because some teachers like to, um, participate or their schedule is more open. Um, there are oftentimes we even offer on weekends. So we try to make sure that we have a variety and a range for our teachers to work with their schedules to make sure that they're able to access information as needed.
Is that it, Board Member Adam Stafford?
Uh, thank you. I'll save it for my second round. Thank you, Dr. White.
You're welcome.
Board Member Queen?
Thank you so very much, um, Dr. White. Um, I just have one quick question. I know I asked a bunch of questions this round. Um, and you guys answered, I'm saying my, most of my questions for our third work session. But, um, when we talk about academic achievement and, um, we talk about reaching a gap, um, I'm just wondering, how have we worked on, um, academic achievement with people using different devices? And I'm bringing, um, I'm just looking at, I'm just going to break it down like this. Um, one of my granddaughters, they live in the same house, have, um, a touchscreen computer. The other one has one is the click. So when they do little games, um, that they do on for the, um, the kids to play, to me, the other one has advantage over her achieving. And sometime it kind of like messes up the other one morale because she doesn't have that touchscreen. So when we talk about academic achievement, I'm just looking at how we as a school system are looking at doing equity across the board, which making sure that every student has a, has a, um, access to the equipment that is needed to make sure that each and every one of them can achieve academically. Um, and yes, this may just be a device we're talking about right now, but I'm going to even just more than just a device with the systems we have, with the programs, with the, um, all the training that may be on a system or the websites where kids may go to. But how are we, what are we putting in place to make sure that across the board equally, um, that people are getting, our students, not just people, our students, our scholars have the same opportunity, um, to achieve academically? Because I think it's very important when we talk about equality and equity that we look at sometimes not just the devices they use, but the different systems that we are using, the different programs that we're using, um, the different things that may happen in different classrooms, the environment of, um, certain classroom. All that has to do with academic achievement. So I'm just wondering, what have we put in place and what are we doing as a school system and for this county public school to make sure that every scholar is able to achieve academically by having every necessary, um, service that is possible with resources?
So thank you for that question. Um, I think one of the major things our school district is doing is we just implemented a new strategic plan. And so in that strategic plan, it really talks about academic innovation and it talks foremost about equity. So I think what it pushes us to do is in every single thing we do, we have to look to say, you know, are we addressing our different scholars? And, you know, a lot of times people will focus on the gap or our students, um, who present a gap in one way or the other. But we have to look at our tag students. We have to look at our special education students, our E S O students, our comprehensive students, even our specialty programs. We, we have to really look at every single pocket that we have, every demographic that we have and to make sure that we are providing the opportunities that will address all of them in an equitable manner. And, and equity doesn't always mean equal, right? So we have to say, where are the resources? Where, where do we lack resources? Um, you gave a really, you know, in, in some people's mind, a simplistic example about a touchscreen device, you know? For us, when we were trying to go one-to-one, we started out in some grades, we had, we were just trying to get a device in every student's hand, right? And so our younger grades, we knew had to be touch, touchscreen, because for them, when you talk about, um, find motor skills and moving things around, and it could be that in some classrooms, we still have, um, clicks with, you know, different devices will be forthcoming. But you bringing that up, you bringing a partner, our parents being partners, the more people have conversations, it allows us to reflect on what we do and to really look, because we could also think that we're hitting a place in equity until someone brings up a, a point that makes us stop, reflect and see, are we providing the best opportunities? And I think as long as our school system stays anchored in this new strategic plan and, and wants feedback from our community, from our teachers, from our staff, the, the stronger we'll be, the better we'll be because we'll constantly look for those ways to get better. I will, the other thing I will applaud, Dr. Golson, is I'm really trying to make sure we have a culturally responsive lens. I think that too allows every staff member to look at every student in their classroom from a perspective that everyone gets what they need and everyone has an opportunity to be authentic in their room, which allows us, if in theory, to close the gap when we do those things and we do them well.
Thank you, Dr. White. Are there any other questions?
Let me, can I just, um, finish on that comment, Madam Chair?
Yes.
Um, I just want to thank you so very much for that, but I just want us to recognize as a school system, especially as our C E O, is it known how important it is to make sure that every scholar has that same device? Um, what I found is even in the midst of COVID, that when my granddaughter was at her, her house, um, and she had to use the touch click because she didn't have a touchscreen, that she wasn't excelling and she wasn't coming in first and second place when they played the games. But when she came here and she was able to use a touchscreen device, then she was able to come in first place, a second place, a third. And I'm just thinking how. You did a fire drill.
Yeah, that, no, your, it's, your time is up. Your time is up. Thank you, Board Member.
Okay.
Thank you for, I've received that comment, so I'll.
Back, I still got three minutes to come back. Thank you.
Board, Bill, Board, Vice Chair Williams?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, there are a couple, uh, programs that really interest me, um, as I go around the, the school system and go into the schools. Um, one of them is the, the Financial Park. I think that's an amazing program for our kids to come in and take on a persona and then they leave out understanding a little bit better about, um, you know, what it takes to live the life that they want based on the career path that they're given. Um, and so can you discuss the changes that will occur this upcoming year when it comes to seventh and eighth grade? What will it look like for our middle school students? Especially in light of the fact that when they go into ninth grade, that is their opportunity now to take on that, um, financial literacy program that has become a graduation requirement?
Sure, thank you for that. So while we, um, this board has actually assisted us in passing our financial literacy course. We know that we don't want to wait till high school for our students to begin to have that conversation. Actually, we want to begin to have that conversation even through, um, our regular core curriculum in our elementaries as we progress them forward. Uh, one of the things that we found is that our eighth graders are tested a lot. Uh, it's a heavy testing schedule. Um, they go from one test to another continuously through the year. And our eighth graders were the ones going to Financial Park, all eighth graders in our districts. It's not that they just show up to Finance Park as a, um, field trip, but they actually have to have many weeks of instruction in social studies and mathematics to prepare them for the experience. So not only were we taking time away with, um, assessments in eighth grade, we were taking time and building time into the curriculum to cover that content. So one of the things that we thought we would do was to move that down to seventh grade, right? Because now it spans the opportunity, because we go, also don't want to. Because now it spans the opportunity because we go, also don't wanna just, oh, you get that in eighth grade and in ninth grade, you might go to Financial Park in high school. Your financial literacy and then we think financial literacy doesn't exist. You know, which is why we've also created our entrepreneurial courses and just other courses to support our students. So this current year, uh, well, starting last year and into this year, Junior Achievement, which is uh the partnership that we have. Moved that program online and it's been going very well. Next year, what you will see though, as we transition to seventh grade, is all of our seventh and eighth graders will be online. Taking the course, which will set us up for the following year, school year twenty four, where our seventh graders will now transition to being back in person and they are now the new grade. Um, it, it, the other thing that it does for us is that we're gonna start promoting all of our specialty programs and our CTE programs when they come to Finance Park. Because why not have that opportunity when they're already exploring careers? To be a time early enough in their middle school years where we introduce the opportunities in Prince George's County. So now parents, they can go home excited about what they learned. They're not waiting till eighth grade and it's like, oh my God, we just have to apply. But they've now had a whole additional year where we talked about these programs. So we think that over time it will be more beneficial. Um, and then in eleven, when they get to high school, there are some students that actually come back for an additional experience. So they get to see the gamut of how they've grown and changed and how their mindset has changed over the years based on the classes.
Thank you, Dr. White. Um, Board Member Adam Stafford, second round.
Yes, thank you so much. Um, I wanted to um ask about our summer program for this year. I know that last year with the Acceleration Academies, we saw some success with our K through five students. And the program was housed at our community schools. And I was wondering if we plan to revisit that this year, as we know, we still have had challenges with students. Uh, dealing with this education disruption and certainly that in-person support was helpful last year. And so I wanted to see if you could talk a bit about that.
Sure, absolutely. We one hundred percent will have summer opportunities for our students again this year. Um, for our elementary students, it will look the same in terms of using our different hubs at our community schools. I know that I will have an opportunity to come to a work session, I believe it's April seventh. Where I'll be able to lay out all the different opportunities that will be available for all of our students this summer. But they are coming and we are been planning and we've been planning since November for the experience and opportunity.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Are there any additional questions? If there are no additional questions, then this will conclude the academic session.
My hand is up. I'm sorry, Madam Chair. I'm coming back to my last three minutes.
Okay, Board Member Queen.
Thank you. Hi, Ms. White, you can go ahead and answer my question.
No, I, I was, I was saying, thank you for letting me know that if you don't mind, can I just ask what two grades they're in?
Um, one is in the, she's in third grade now, but this was actually when she was in the second grade. And the other one is in um first grade. They're like a year apart.
Okay, that's just helpful. Um, I just thank you for bringing.
Now in the third grade, the um, after second and kindergarten, but they um, they all have different devices, like she still has a. The click and I'm beyond to be, I know I need to advocate on her behalf, but she hates the fact that the other ones are using touchscreen and she have to use the click. Now, unless she used the home, I just think in our fairness, the kids should actually be able to have the same thing. Um, you know, and especially when I look at what was happening and I real, I knew what was happening. When she would come over here and she was able to win at that game because she was using a, you know, she would get and score because she was able to use the touchscreen. But when she used a click, she was having a harder time. So I think when we talk about being fair, we have to be fair across our, to our scholars across the board. So I just wanna make sure that um in, in, in any class, especially a class where they're doing an activity and they're challenged. That all of the students have the same type of device. If you're gonna give a click, give every child a click. If you're gonna give a touchscreen, let every child in that class have a touchscreen because it needs to be fair across the board and that's, I just wanna make sure.
Yeah, and that, that's received. I appreciate your comment and, and we'll continue to work to ensure that we provide that equity across our schools.
Thank you so very much.
You're welcome.
Now, are there any more questions of reference to academics? Therefore, this concludes the discussion on the Division of Academics and we can now move to the Division of Accountability. Uh, let's turn our attention to our next section, Division of Accountability. Board Members, do you have any questions? No questions on accountability? Oh, I see, uh, Vice Chair Williams.
Thank you, Dr. Miller. Um, I think um, the Division of Accountability, I think is, is, is one of my favorite uh departments. Because at the end of the day, we wanna see some, some measurable change in our students' academic success. And because of how our school system, in all school systems, the, the annual calendar. We can't see the changes, the results of the changes immediately. If we start something new in academics. We will not see the result until the end of the school year and then once that has been certified, we're already in September. And so um, I think the Accountability Office for me is one of my favorites because of the fact that. We're able to, to measure the, the change from where we were. We implement some strategy to improve and then we could see it at some point. So. When we're talking about the uh monitoring and account of the Accountability Office and setting the benchmarks for our students cohorts and academic improvements. I know that we can go from school system wide to individual schools down to the individual student. Um, my question is, when we're moving, trying to go from the student to the. School to the school system, how are we able, are we in the conversation with our schools? As they're creating their plans based on the students that are in their schools within the cohort? Um, and so if you understand the question, please proceed or if I need to provide more information.
No, no, I can, I can jump in.
Okay, good.
Thank you, Vice Chair, for the question and thank you for your excitement about my division. I really appreciate your involvement, especially in your interest in the data. So what you're alluding to is actually the school performance plans. That's the vehicle in which that work occurs. And so is there uh resources from the central office to assist in that effort? Absolutely. So within monitoring accountability, we have accountability specialists that liaison and work directly with their elementary, middle and high schools. And establishing those school performance plans. Using improvement science as the vehicle to do so, they work directly with those schools and establishing their goals, assisting them in their progress monitoring. And summarizing all of that within those plans. And those plans are also posted on our school uh profile pages out on our website. It's for your, any other public review of, of that information.
Thank you for that. Um, and, and I wanted you to talk about that because. We have a lot of parents that tend to use um some national website to rate our schools. And I always try to remind people that we're the second largest school system in Maryland. So when we do better, that target that we're trying to reach moves. So if we move up seven points, the state's target may move three points because that's what we're doing. And so the ability for us to um, not just monitor and hold schools accountable for the, their improvements. But to be a part of looking at the individual students and creating that plan and then posting that plan. And then our parents can go on our school website and see the plan and see our changes, I think is really important. And I think that, that your office is, is helping us to do that. So thank you for sharing that. And thank you for reminding us that that performance plan for each school is available on our website for parents to see. Not only the plan, but then the progress as well. So thank you so much for that.
Thank you, Board Member Williams. Board Member Pam, Pamela Boozer Struther.
Uh, thank you so much and thank you, Dr. Goldson, and to all the Division Chiefs for this excellent budget. Uh, Vice Chair Williams is kinda introduced um the thoughts on my mind this evening. I'm, I'm very concerned about the state test and of course, the reliance on them in a, in this um. Judging of our school system and how they're utilized by those websites. And we, we've learned in the past that we follow the cohorts, you know, like the, we wanna follow the third graders. And then when they move to the next testing period, we want that, we don't wanna, we don't compare third grade to third grade to third grade. We watch our, our students move. But the pandemic has really disrupted these cohorts. It's different students. Um, they maybe lot fewer students, you know, depending on where we had disruptions in enrollment. And I'm, I, I guess, I, I think I ask this every year because of my skepticism around these tests. Because I, I wanna know, I believe our students are, you know, move with, you know, our teachers move our students. And I believe this is very uh much in the classroom and individual and the assessments that the teachers give are the ones that I, I trust the most as a parent. So what, what should we be concerned about for PG CPS? Are we worried that these state tests are going to? Uh, undermine us, you know, not reveal the, the right data about how our students are moving? Thank you.
So thank you, Board Member Strutter. So when you're looking at the state assessment program. What we emphasize routinely is the fact that that is only one data point out of many that we need to look at in understanding our, our student achievement. Uh, unfortunately with COVID, um, and actually prior to COVID, the state has been transitioning in their, in their assessment system. So they haven't been able to stand up the new assessment system until the first time this fall where they kind of put. A, a beta type out there for our students to engage in. So when it comes to the state assessment, we have a lot of questions. Because again, we haven't seen where the state's gonna, or how the state's gonna define proficiency within this new assessment program. So what we've been relying on in the interim is our benchmark assessment system. So we've established our benchmarks. We have three that are administered per year. Um, so we're looking at that data. Now, the benchmarks just happen to be on the same platform as the state assessment, same item types as the state assessments. But they're actually targeted to those standards that are uh taught, administered during that particular quarter. So it gives more diagnostic information for our teachers to be able to use to inform their instruction and individual, excuse me, individualize their instruction for students. So we've been placing greater emphasis on our benchmarks as well as several of the other internal assessments that we have, again, to help guide instruction. The state piece, jury is still out, cuz again, we don't know. All the information that's gonna be needed to answer your question until after this first real administration this spring. And we'll actually get the results back late next fall into next winter. Because this spring is the first operational assessment of, of the new MCAP, the new state assessment program. Over the summer, they're gonna be setting standards, defining what that proficiency is by looking at the data and pulling in professionals to help, you know, make those judgment calls. Then they're gonna let districts know the results of that assessment program next fall. So it's gonna be a while. So meanwhile, we're relying on our own internal, uh, our own internal assessment program to help inform instruction. So thank you for the question.
Thank you. Uh, Board Member Queen.
Thank you so very much. Um, my, my question is around people accounting and um boundaries. Um, you know, we have some schools that are overcrowded. We have some classes in here. It is thirty five and over forty students in one class. Um, when we talk about accountability. Um, how are we being accountable to make sure that, and I'm get back to equality and equity, you hear me say that a lot. Um, it's done across the board through our, our school system and our boundaries to make sure what is done in north is done in south and what is done in central. Um, to make sure that the same amount of students are in, excuse me for that phone ringing, to make sure that the same amount of students are in every class, no matter where. Where they at, or what school they at, whether the school is north, central, south, just to make sure across the board. Um, if I have a student that's in north, I have the same amount of students that I, we have in south and central. How do we make sure if the school can be actually right around a corner, but to make sure. Um, we're being accountable to make sure that all of our schools and all of our staff, especially when you talk about testing. I hear you talk about testing it, but what's bothering us to hear teachers say it's forty students in one class. How can one teacher actually test? Um, you can imagine what they're going through, forty students when some, when another class may have twenty. It's so easy uh um for that teacher to be able to deal with it, but we have to think as a school system, how do we get better? Of being accountable to make sure that across the board, that we have the same amount of students in each class, in each school. Uh, if not, maybe we have extra teachers um that's needed to help the teachers um to relieve some of the um relief or stress. But I just wanna make sure, when do we get there and how do we get there? Because I know we haven't got there because I get the complaints. I get the complaints with teachers who saying they. Um, have too many students or more students or, and especially in the midst of COVID now, when they have to take on someone else's class. But how do we get there as a school system and how can we be more accountable to make sure um that our scholars are getting everything they need? Um, not only to get educated, but the services they need to make sure that they able to succeed.
Thank you, Board Member Queen.
Okay, so to address that question, uh, talking about the specific functionality of pupil accounting and school boundaries. We go through the process of generating our enrollment projections and reflecting on our enrollments of what we're predicting is gonna look like the outcome for our schools. As far as their capacity versus student ratios going into the, each school year. That information is shared with our capital planning office, projects office, of which, you know, we have to go through the process of truly looking at our facilities to see. Where we have the overcrowding issues. And from there, you'll hear, as you've heard in many of our board meetings, where we're tackling those issues of overcrowding in some of our schools and having capacity in others. And the need to actually build out new schools, you know, in those cases where, in those places where we do have overcrowding. So the best we can do is just uh try to be informed as far as what our projection, what our enrollment projections look like. Um, and do the best we can uh to address that capacity, but that brings in itself many issues. Cuz what you're proposing or, you know, what are the solutions? The solutions are adding trailers, adding, you know, portable spaces. Or perhaps redistricting. So it's not an easy, easy solution, you know, there is no easy solution. Um, but again, everything builds upon those enrollments and those enrollment projections uh to stand up both our budgeting and our staffing models.
Thank you. Board, uh, Vice Chair Williams.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, thank you, Dr. Strider, for bringing up the benchmarks. And um, I remember when you were developing those, the platform to do the benchmarks. Um, and how you were trying to match or mimic the state's platform for their um testing. Can you talk a little bit uh more about the um, the benchmark testing that you do throughout the year? And how that relates to the actual curriculum that they're doing at the time? We're not talking about. Testing, just testing out of the blue to see how much they learn. We're following the curriculum. Is that correct?
That is correct. So our benchmark assessments, uh, so let me get my perps to first statement you made. Um, it just so happens, we had an open procurement for both the platform and the content for, for this benchmark assessment program. It just so happened that the vendor um that was chosen for this, that had the best bid, um, is the same as the state. So it just so happens that our platform is the same as the state's platform and administering the state assessment program. That's important because it, you know, test prep, there's no need. Our kids are already experienced with the platform. They understand all the manipulatives, the use of the calculators. The multi-language buttons and so on and so forth. They're already getting a familiarity with all of those functions. By in part taking our benchmark assessments. So now why the benchmark assessments? The benchmarks occur after the end of each quarter, quarter one, two, and three. And the design of those benchmarks, CNI has reviewed all of the items on each of those benchmarks to ensure that they're addressing the standards taught during that quarter. So it's specific to the instruction that occurred in that actual point of time. That's why they're more diagnostic informative. Uh, to inform instruction, you know, in a more timely manner than waiting for that, the results of the state assessment earlier, the next following school year, if that makes sense.
Right. And so when, when you're talking about these benchmark assessments, you're speaking of those tests that we would take at the end of the quarter anyway. To assess what we learned during the previous quarter. So we're not adding any additional tasks. We're just assessing them using the same platform as the school sys, as the state, which gives our kids the opportunity to practice that platform. And I just remember when we talked about this probably, um, I don't know, a, a while ago. About how we wanted to support our students in learning and now we're seeing the results of, of that strategy and plan. Be implemented. So um, so thank you. And that's all the questions that I have. Board Member Adam Stafford, hand is up.
Thank you.
Board Member Adam Stafford.
Thank you so much and thank you, Dr. Strider, for your presentation. And I too wanted to just say, you know, I appreciate the work that. Uh, the Accountability Office does. And I wanted to just, this is sort of a question and a. The Accountability Office does. And I wanted to just, this is sort of a question and a comment. And, you know, given that we know that standardized tests contain a level of bias. And they don't account for the needs of individual students and communities. And also given the fact that we are unique in that we develop our own benchmarks, which is, you know, really something to be noted. You know, have we considered developing maybe even our own ranking system for some of the more nuanced and intangible sort of. Elements that make our school system great that parents might be interested in. So for example, you know, looking at. A dashboard that highlights, you know, components like the amount of farm or first generation students in a community that are going to college or. Levels of curriculum inclusivity that we have in some of the, you know, curriculum that we've developed ourselves. Some of the results of some of those school climate surveys that we do in-house that we all we report to the state, but that would be great information for parents to know and. Maybe even for given school, like the number of teachers of color with National Board certification. You know, I'm just wondering, you know, how do we, you know, display some of the asset-based. Highlights of our county leveraging the Accountability Office. Those are just some thoughts that I've been having.
So what's coming to mind to me on the comments that you shared, and again, thank you very much, Board Member Adam Stafford. Is the CSIs, the Critical Success Indicators that we've included within our new T26 strategic plan. If you go to the back of the plan, there's a couple tiered levels of, we're referring to them as CSI, again, Critical Success Indicators in there. That'll help us inform our progress in achieving that strategic plan, you know, to achieve our goal of transformation within this district. Now, a couple of them that you mentioned, I know are referenced with the no CSIs, but you did mention a couple others that I would be very interested in following up on. For possible inclusion in those metrics. So what I'd say is that's the place. Again, that's where we are assessing within that strategic plan, that T26 plan. That's where you're going to see. That progress monitoring in the types of metrics that you've just mentioned. That isn't necessarily within our assessment program. So that would be the area where you're going to see those metrics. So. What I would ask is if you could forward some of those metrics and then we could comment where we are with those. And again, if you have any new or something that we we should add, we will. Thank you.
I'd say I think that. The tide is changing. I think that parents now are saying that a test score doesn't really. Make an entire school, right? Or that doesn't really tell the story of a school or a school community. And it tells a story that can be biased, right? And because our schools have such rich history, culture, and just so many. Programs and assets, you know, how can we tell that story through data, but data that reflects components that. You know, maybe before 2020, people didn't know mattered to them. And now they do, like, is this school a safe space for my student of color? To achieve, right? And like giving some of those assets within in a data sort of presentation. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Are there any more questions of Dr. Strater? If there are no more questions, this concludes the discussion on the Division of Accountability. Now we will move to the Division of Business Management Services. Board members, do you have any questions? Board Member Vice Chair Williams.
Thank you, Dr. Miller. My question is really just a clarification question around the. There are two questions. We started last year with. I can't remember the exact name, but zero-based budgeting or something like that. And I thought that is, that's just so wonderful because there is there is this implied. Knowledge that, oh, you have to spend all of your money this year because if you don't, they're going to take it away next year. But what I've seen in the past, it just seems like we started with the base budget and then we just, it didn't really compare. What we spent versus what we didn't spend. We just started with this base budget. But now the way we're doing the budget currently, it gives us the opportunity to to look at. How we're planning and putting our strategies in place because some things that we may have done in the past three years ago. May not be applicable now, and so the budget would look differently. So how is that coming? And can you explain what? The change and how you develop the budget this year?
Yes, absolutely. So yeah, this is something that is administration. I think we're really proud of the way that this has come together. We actually did start this process, what we call modified zero-based budgeting. Three cycles ago. So this is really the third cycle that we're going through it. And the idea then is that this is very time consuming and it also isn't something that's really effective if you do it every year. Because if you start over each year, you're really taking too much time to. You really just need minor modifications in most years. So we assigned one-third of the divisions to go through this each year. And we just got through, at least for the proposed budget, that final of the three cycles. So now everyone has been through this once. But so when we talk about zero-based budgeting for the public, we're talking about. A change from our traditional model of just making really what I call minor tweaks to a budget. So that's the more traditional way that we go through the budgeting process while looking to make some assumptions. The zero base is where you actually start from the bottom and you build up everything that you want to do that year. Every meeting that you plan to attend that year, all the supplies that you need, really everything. That your division is going to do outside of personnel and grants. So we do think that this has been pretty successful. What we've found is as each department has gone through this in the year that they're doing the ZBB cycle. They are coming up with some very thoughtful ideas. That kind of it gives them a little more freedom to look at their departments differently. This is also really helpful because we do have, of course, as everyone does, management turnover. So. You don't want to hold people to the. Something that might not have been their way of doing something when they come in as a new manager. One thing we have found is that people do make more cuts as they consider their budgets pretty deeply. They're able to find to look more creatively at the resources that they have. And when you have to justify every dollar and exactly how it's going to be used, you find that you don't necessarily need every dollar. The one thing I would stress, and Dr. White, if she's still on, would agree with this, this is extremely, extremely time consuming, especially in a department that large. So I know Dr. White's team spent a good part of the summer really looking deep into their budget. Working with our budget team to. See exactly what was in there and what needs to change. But it's not something we could really pull off every year for all departments. So we're looking forward to kind of going into that second cycle again next year.
So so since we've been doing this over the last three years, what what are your thoughts about what you're finding? What's the outcome of us having to start from zero again? Are you seeing that we're being? How would you describe the the use of our our tax dollars?
So I think in a lot of ways. We are fairly effective. I think it is nice to kind of look at this. Eat every few years because you do see that that some things might overlap with each other or some things are going unspent and we don't necessarily need those things. So. It's just a kind of another lens to look at every few years. And I think I'm very curious to see as we move into year four, how those first. Departments, if they're still looking at the same things, or if they're going to try to make changes again as they go through their second cycle.
Okay, thank you. I'll hold for a second round. Thank you.
Well, we'll begin the second round and your hand is only one up.
Okay, so my my question is around the the. What I typically do when I look at the budget is I look at the actual expenditures over a few years to see. You know, are, you know, is the budget that's proposed similar to what has been actually spent over a few years? And what I noticed this year was, you know, some of the zero-based budgeting. I did see some differences and some things stayed the same. So I can sort of see that as we are moving into. And this may, it may be the zero-based budgeting that caused this. The one thing that I saw throughout the budget is the workman's comp. Sometimes this was much different compared to the actual. Full-time employees. Sometimes there wasn't much change, but then our our workman's comp line sort of. There was a big difference in in that. Can you can you talk to that a little bit?
Sure. The way that we budget for workers' compensation in the budget is, I'd say overly complex as. We kind of apply it down to individual levels, even though it's not actually those specific employees that are actually out on. Due to workers' compensation. So it is one line that looks strange as you look through the different budgets. We try to right-size this every year. But in low claims years, we're going to see as we right-size it, that it really gets. The costs get applied to all positions of the next year. And then in higher claims year, the following year, it's applied. In a different way. So I guess one way to say this is we have an average rate across all employees that we're adjusting. And so it's not really necessarily the departments that you see that are spending the workers' comp money. It's just a way of allocating that to individual employees. And there might be large swings between years because we're adjusting each year our overall allocation.
Okay, thank you for that. It just didn't seem like it was a one-to-one sort of comparison. So some areas have remained the same and some areas were tremendously different. So. And I don't know if this falls under your department, but it definitely definitely showed up in multiple divisions. And it's something called the MNR. Is that under your department or is that someone else?
I'm just kidding. So that is, I believe, maintenance and repair. And it goes across like many different departments. I believe that's actually a state category. So I can get the more specifics about what falls under that category, but I would expect it to be mainly in building maintenance, but probably other building. Services, but probably other departments as well. And in the state guidance, they do outline in detail exactly what needs to go into each of those cost categories.
Yeah, I thought it had something to do with buildings or or some physical part of the building. Go ahead, Dr.
Or equipment. So that's why you see it in several divisions.
Okay, thank you so much for that. That's all the questions that I have.
Thank you, Board Vice Chair Williams. Board Member Judy Mickens-Murray. Turn your mic on.
Good evening, Dr. Goldson and her team. The reason I don't have many questions tonight is you guys did an excellent job in answering our questions that we sent to you. And I applaud you for that. The level of detail that you have provided is awesome. I'm also impressed with the talent that you have, Dr. Goldson, on your team. You have hired some really smart people. And the projections for the budgets, the expenditures, the actuals, I mean, you guys are capturing a lot at a detail that. It's kind of hard to see in a lot of organizations. So once again, I thank you. And I will probably have more questions during the next session after I hear from the public. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Board Member Mickens-Murray. Are there any more questions relative to the Division of Business Management Services? If not, this concludes the discussion on the Office of the Chief Executive Officer. And I ditto everything Board Member Mickens-Murray said. In reference to the Chief Executive Officer's team, the dynamic team that you have. With that, we will, I will entertain. I like to thank everyone for participating in our first three-budget work session for the fiscal year 2023 proposed operating budget. I'm hoping that everyone may be able to join the board for the budget public hearing, which is scheduled to begin following the adjournment of this meeting. At 7:00 PM. And we're doing real good because it's only 6:40. So. It was very useful, very beneficial and helpful to get, be able to have, send our questions in and have them addressed prior to tonight. So now may I have a motion and second to approve actions taken in the emergency executive session on today, January 27.
So moved?
Second.
It has been moved as second to confirm the actions taken in the emergency executive session, which included to discuss. Personnel matters regarding the appointment, employment and removal of certain employees. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Are there any nays? Any abstentions? The actions taken in the emergency executive this executive session are confirmed. Now may I have a motion and second to adjourn this evening's budget work session?
Madam Chair, I would like to make a motion to adjourn this evening budget work session.
Is there a second?
Second.
It has been moved in second that we adjourn this evening's budget work session. All in favor? Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
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 Any nays? Any extensions? Having none, this concludes the January 27, 2022 budget work session. Thank you all, and I will see you at 7:00 PM.
Thank you.